Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman. Nice to see you.
You as well. So I read with interest the 2012 Annual Disparity Study on page A8, and looking at the MBE/WBE numbers for PIDC, and I will say to you that they are quite impressive. So with that, just give us a brief update on what you're doing down there at the naval shipyard, and really update us from activities since last year.
Sure. I think as it relates particularly to our utilization of minority and women-owned businesses, we have tried to establish a series of very regular and routine processes, working with Angela in the Office of Economic Opportunity, so that anytime we have a, particularly a construction opportunity, or a design opportunity, we meet with the Office of Economic Opportunity before that procurement goes out to bid. We try to promote, we establish goals, and we try to promote the availability of the work as broadly as we possibly can. And I think that it has resulted, because there's a fairly regular amount of work, particularly infrastructure-type work that we are responsible for, firms are very actively following the work there. They have opportunities through our website to see what bid opportunities are currently available, and they have an opportunity to participate in that process. So I think it's really all about availing ourselves of the resources that the Office of Economic Opportunity has provided to us. I think it's partly about having a regular amount of work, so the business community is constantly engaged with opportunities there. And I think it's about, you know, just trying to set goals in a way that we can continue to achieve them, and exceed them, and set higher goals.
And so with that, in that spirit, you should know that I met with Bill Hankowski, because one, I think beautiful example that seems to work down there is the equity partnership that took place between Centerra and Liberty?
Liberty Property.
Liberty. And so the question is, and I've had these offline conversations with Ms. Dal Burton, how can we seek to duplicate that type of enterprise that was very successful for both parties? And that conversation is underway, so he's going to look to corporations who philosophically get it when it comes to that type of enterprise, and I am to look to other MBE/WBEs that could be matched up, if you will. So I put that on the record, because we shouldn't operate in silos, and we need to figure out how we can do that, and grow the scale of those type of partnerships.
And I think that partnership is a good example of a practice that we have with, again, the Commerce Department, pretty regularly. Liberty Property was selected to develop a portion of the Navy Yard almost a decade ago now. And it was through a public solicitation, so there was a lot of promotion of the opportunity. And as part of that, we established a goal for equity participation by minority or women-owned businesses. And so I think that, it's been 10 years, and they've been able to now do a lot of work, and see a lot of benefit. But the initiation of that opportunity really came from the very, kind of, I would say typical, type of goal-setting that we try to do with development opportunities. And, you know, those are, those opportunities are more rare, because we build a lot more streets, and, you know, put a lot more utility pipes in the ground than we do have, than we have opportunities for development partnership. But again, I think it's part of institutionalizing those kinds of goals and objectives.
Yes.
And having a community that has a depth of participants who are able and interested in participating.
Yes, yes. My last question to you, and this may be somewhat rhetorical. As you contract with those who want to buy land, lease land, down there, is there a looksee at their boards? And here's why I ask. Urban Outfitters has no women on their board. And now we know that there's a law on the books that says if you want to do business with the city, and you want to bid, or you're going after bids for $250,000 or more, you'll have to tell us what your board looks like. And so in the negotiation stage, or the review of documents, what is asked of companies who want to do business down at PIDC with regard, we hear what's happening around MBE/WBE, and this new law is not a year old yet. But when we have a company like Urban Outfitters, in fact, by the way, I told my daughter, we won't be buying from there anymore. What and how can we, how do we fix that? Can we fix that, when they are an independent, for-profit entity?
Right. I think in a lot of ways, with that kind of an issue, and that issue specifically, you know, the city obviously has tried to make inroads when there are incentives provided for that development. So Urban Outfitters, as an example, didn't receive any direct incentive. We sell them buildings at fair market value, and they invest their dollars to redevelop them.
Sure.
But I think in other instances where the opening has been, when there are certain types of incentives provided, that there's a return. We have, quite frankly, we have not gotten to the situation where if we're leasing 2,000 square feet of office space to a professional services firm, we don't make requirements of them about the composition of their workforce, or their governance structure. But it's obviously a discussion that has a lot of importance, and it's obviously this conversation we're happy to discuss with you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Bass, you're up.
You. You know, I just had a quick question about in-store, is it?
In-store.
In-store. And I know that you did the first in-store project in my district, and I think the second, too. Is that correct?
Rose Petals was the first.
Rose Petals was the first.
Second one, Karen?
I would just say yes.
There is another one in my district. Okay, great. So can you give me some details on the in-store program in terms of the budget, and how much we've spent on in-store, what it's going to look like going forward, just any additional detail that you have?
Sure. I'm going to ask Karen, who runs that program, to help give us some details.
In-store was developed as a business attraction expansion tool. So we're trying to attract businesses to neighborhood commercial corridors where they may need a little economic incentive to locate. And we're really excited about it. The first one, as you said, was Rose Petals Cafe, which is open and running. We've awarded 10 so far. So that's, and they're expected to create 65 new jobs. We've budgeted $300,000 a year of CDBG funds for the program. So, and at this rate, I would actually say we are over, we've, with 10, we're sort of running higher than where we thought we'd be. We thought we would, $300,000 a year would be good. At 10, we're about, at about $450,000 committed so far. So we are probably going to have to tighten up our review process, and make sure that we're really getting the best, the best deals that have the likelihood of making the most impact in that neighborhood.
Okay. And so the in-store program is basically the program where, you know, there's resources allocated to a business to, you know, make it more attractive, design-wise, the facade?
Inside.
Well, this is for the inside, right. So we also have a storefront improvement program. That's smaller awards, up to $8,000 for a typical storefront, to match any improvements they make to the outside. In-store program is to cover some of the upfront equipment costs, equipment fit-out costs, for a business to come in, move into a new storefront, or for an existing business who's going to expand, either expanding into like the neighboring storefront, or expanding their line of business where, all of a sudden, they need a new, for example, we funded a frozen yogurt business that's expanding to have sandwiches, so they needed to, you know, buy new equipment to do that.
Okay. Can you tell me what, out of the 10 programs that you funded, the participation in terms of minority businesses, which ones were minority, women-owned?
I cannot tell you that right here, but we have, I can tell you that. I mean, we have that information.
We have that, okay. Yeah, I'd like to have that information submitted to the chair. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Blackwell?
Certainly, I'm proud to sit on PIDC's board for the President and this council. And when we do have people who come for loans and dollars, John Grady always, we always go through minority participation.
Very good.
It was interesting in the issue you mentioned, because they've been, they've been on our agenda in a big way. So it's, so it's great to always expand and do more, to do more, to find another area where we can make sure we have inclusion. And I do want to commend him, and PIDC, for what they do.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
We appreciate your support of the board as well.
Thank you.
I would say ditto, given the work that our offices do every fall. Thank you very much. So I'm going to squeeze in a question, Councilman O., and then you're up next. To, back to the discussion around business attraction and retention, briefly summarize what staff do, or how they approach the task of bringing new businesses in the city? And then is there a trigger that happens that alerts you when their lease is about to be up, where we can seek to retain them in the city, and/or offer incentives, if you will, to hold them here, so that we can secure those jobs?
Okay, good question. I'll, let me take the latter part first. We have a sort of standing committee that reviews when leases are up in the city, the major leases. And this is, this is jointly between PIDC, Commerce, Center City District. We know when these are coming up, and we start doing outreach early.
Very good.
To find out how, you know, and at first, it's all, how you doing, what's going on, problems, what's happening. Eventually, it's the discussion of, oh, by the way, your lease is up, and we need to talk about that. The question about how we find out, again, is very much related to the partnerships that we have with PIDC. That is, what we try to do is have sort of open doors on multiple fronts. And because the system is pretty well-coordinated, in terms of who's talking to who every day, John and I are talking to each other every day. Our staffs are talking to each other every day. And we, as well as the formal meetings we have, we're getting, we're getting requests. And so, an example, we probably have about, I think, 10 major out-of-town business attraction opportunities that we're pursuing right now.
In the pipeline?
In the pipeline. Four of them have 500 or more jobs. Now, we're not going to get all of them.
Sure.
If we got one of them, we'd probably say we were doing pretty well. But we're pushing hard on all those fronts. How do we know? Sometimes there are things that we know from our own networks. Sometimes there are things that people come externally and say, this is a business that is thinking about being here. And by the way, one of the things I would tell you is that, for a number of these businesses, particularly the ones that have been located in a suburb somewhere, the attraction of places, the ability to have a place like the Navy Yard to put in front of them is an enormous advantage for the city of Philadelphia. Because now we have choices. It's not just about being in a neighborhood, or being in the downtown. We have this more suburban-feeling thing that is actually in the city of Philadelphia. So it comes from many quarters. It's not a...
There's several different access points, if you will.
And we want to keep it that way. We want as many access points as we can.
Can you speak to, maybe in the past year, other, the number of businesses that are coming to us, relocating here from other cities? Just to get an idea of how we're doing in that, in that area.
Well, I would say, there are some coming from other cities. Businesses, you know, we talked earlier, for instance, about this major brewer who is in, I think, San Diego, definitely California, who wants to be here, because they need an East Coast operation. So that's an example of somebody coming from fairly far away. There is a large engineering-slash-energy-efficiency firm named EcoSave, actually from Australia, that has relocated here in the Navy Yard, acquired an out-of-town engineering company to be part of its operation, and is basically moving 125 jobs into the city of Philadelphia as a result of this. Why is he here? He thinks this is a good base of operations for what he wants to do in North America. It sometimes comes to really simple things, or personal things, like, I like the city, my spouse likes the city, I think I want to raise my kid here. All, in this particular case, all of that's in the mix.
So let me ask, on this committee, is there a professional that has an in-depth knowledge of our arts and cultural scene? Because we know it's big, and it's huge for a lot of reasons. And I've learned over the years that oftentimes, the leaders of major companies who relocate, relocate here, have that as a factor that they consider, which becomes a huge attraction.
I would tell you, Councilwoman, that there's not an individual who I would say is a specific sole expert on that. But there are a lot of people in this group who have expertise, including myself. I have, just because of my architectural career, half of it was probably in arts and culture, some in this city. So between us, we know an awful lot of people, and there are still several of the cultural institutions in town that kind of rely on me as a, as a funnel to help them think through their own growth and development issues.
Okay. Well, we know that that's important for all the reasons.
It's very important.
That being the number two, number three industry in town. With regards to next year, know that members like Councilman O., and myself, and probably others, will be curious to know the yield, it's called return on investment, from those, I guess you would call them, informational, international experiences that the, that the administration has taken on. I just want to put that on the record, because I'm sure the question will be asked again next year.
And we will do our best to give you as accurate a point as we can on how that worked out.
Okay. Councilman O., you're up.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll be brief. I just, I just thought it was important to clarify the importance of the issue about the E-Consult report. I see that the report that we're talking about now, from E-Consult for the Office of Economic Opportunity, cost the city $71,000 or so. I am sure that someone paid for an econometric forecast, or a report. And I can speak for myself, that I do look at these reports, I compare them to other reports, we do a lot of objective data, in order to make decisions. And I base a lot of, some of the votes in this council, right here, based on the reports. The credibility and clarity of that report as not being a hypothetical, kind of, it has to be a forecast, an econometric forecast, which is a professionally-done report. That's as I understand it. I'm open to the fact that maybe there's a little confusion on my part, or something like that. I find that hard to understand, that somebody paid for a report that pulled out a number out of thin air, or just made it up, or something like that.
I don't think it was that. I think it was, I mean, that particular instance, and by the way, nobody's delusional here. I mean, this is, this is subtle stuff sometimes. In that particular instance, I think a hypothetical was being put forward to demonstrate an advocacy point about the city's overall tax structure. And it's a fair, fair point to make. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. I'm, I understand I should not be discussing it with you.
Yeah, we ought to, we ought to be discussing with somebody else.
But, you know, we're in a public forum, and I recall that we're being televised, so I will say that I will follow that up. I think it is critically important that the information, as I understand it, in the report, nuanced or not, is clear, because, you know, votes and strategies are, are in some part being based upon that report. It has to be accurate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fair point.
We'll want to touch base to see if Councilman Kenny has any remaining questions. I have three more. SafeCam provides reimbursements for up to 50% of the total cost for eligible equipment and installation. How much money is an individual SafeCam?
Karen? Oh, Karen's saying $3,000 approximately, on average.
Okay. Further, the testimony states that 92 applications were received, 64 were awarded, and 26 have been completed and paid for. Of the 64 individuals or businesses that have participated, talk about where are they geographically, geographically? Are they clustered in one area, or just additional detail?
Yeah, we'll give you, we'll give you a little bit more perspective on that.
Right. I can, I can certainly get you a list. I mean, we have a list of them, and by address, by council district, by zip code. They're, they're all over the city. I would say there are definitely clusters, because word gets around, it's word of mouth. And there's a few motivated contractors who are, who are pitching the program to sell, to sell their security cameras, which is great. So, you know, so they're hitting certain sections of the city, or certain sectors of business. I have a full list.
Councilman Jones is not here, but I knew if he was here, he would want to know how many are in my councilmatic districts. So I would suspect that district council members would appreciate having a map and breakdown.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and one other thing is, we're still getting the word out about this. And so we're happy to go out to, I mean, we've been doing this, you know, business association meetings, and, but we're happy to do more of that. But I know that we have done some in the, in the fourth district.
Okay.
Council can really help on this, because if there's some area where it's a little light, this is an opportunity for council to help us get that word out.
It's just that. It's one of, it's one of our programs where any business, anywhere in the city, is eligible to do this. And so, you know, we really want people to take advantage of it.
So make sure that all council members get whatever flyer, leaflet, document that speaks to that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll send it out again. Sure.
On page 57 of your testimony, in the Class 200 expenditures, you say that that $2 million-plus is for various community projects. Elaborate on what are various community projects.
Yeah, I think what, I had mentioned during the break, Councilwoman, that, that I think we put that number on the wrong form. That's, that's, that's block grant money.
I see. Okay, then. Thank you for that clarity.
Sorry about that.
On page five of your test, Mike, now we're going to go to micro lending, and this is my last few questions. On page five of your testimony, you indicate that you partner with the international nonprofit KIVA. Is that an acronym?
Yes. Is it an acronym, Sylvia?
No.
Why don't you come up, and you may need to explain KIVA.
That specializes in micro lending. So describe what that is, what amount, what is it generally used for? Just additional background, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Sylvie Galley-Harrett. I'm Deputy Chief of Staff to the Deputy Mayor. So we're currently working on a partnership with KIVA to bring, KIVA Philadelphia, to launch a KIVA Philadelphia. The way it works is the loans initially through KIVA, it's a web-based platform, sort of like a crowdfunding site, but it's crowd lending. Individuals such as you and I go on the site, and we provide loans to the businesses that are featured on that site. In order for a business to be featured, they need to be endorsed by a trustee, such as a Chamber of Commerce, a CDC, a business association. So that's been the bulk of our work so far, is recruiting trustees. We have 26 individuals and organizations recruited in Philadelphia to be trustees.
What's the goal?
The goal is 40 over three years. So, and we'd like to launch at the end of this year. We have five businesses that have been endorsed, and I believe all five have received their loans. They, most of them are $5,000. That's the initial amount, that's the ceiling for businesses initially. If they pay back those $5,000, and there's zero interest loans, then they can apply again for up to $10,000.
That sounds very exciting. So have you sat down with the African-American Chamber of Commerce, and Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and the, help me, Councilman O., the Asian Chamber of Commerce?
Asian, Asian-American.
I just want to be accurate.
We have. So we've had, we actually had the CEO of KIVA Zip. This program domestically is actually called KIVA Zip. Internationally, it's KIVA. We had the CEO of KIVA Zip come to Philadelphia and do a workshop. We had about 40 individuals and organizations attend. And actually, the Asian-American Chamber, the African-American Chamber, and the Hispanic-American Chamber have all become trustees.
Very good. Very, very good. So you said the number to date is 35 micro loans have been made? Is that what I heard you to say?
No, I'm sorry. We have five that have been made so far.
Five. And are you on deadline for X number by a certain date?
We are pushing. So the, KIVA has challenged us, KIVA's a nonprofit, they've challenged us to get 25 businesses endorsed, in order to become a KIVA city. So we're working, our timeframe is really the end of this year, and we're pushing, we're working with our trustees to endorse businesses.
Wow. That sounds exciting. Well, any other members have any counsel for, any other questions for the Commerce Department? While with that, we'll, surely, Ms. Dal Burton?
Let me just one comment for the year.
Please, sure.
This is an acknowledgement, because the Economic Opportunity Review Committee was established by City Council to enable the Office of Economic Opportunity, in collaboration with the African-American Chamber and Hispanic Chambers, to have a forum in City Council chambers, which enables business owners, consultants, employees, potentially, of contracting community businesses, to get engaged in sharing with us the conditions within the marketplace. And so I just wanted to thank you, and members of City Council, for the opportunity to engage the public in that fashion.
Sure.
And then finally, in terms of Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, who have, and Councilman Clark, who have had members of their staff serve on Economic Opportunity Oversight Committees, it's extremely important.
It is.
For council to be engaged in that way. So I just wanted to acknowledge all of you for that.
Surely. And the mission continues?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to the next department that is due to Parks and Recreation, which we know is chaired by Councilwoman Cindy Bass. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I should come up.[1527.88]
That's okay, this is.
That's okay, this is.
Took a little bit out of this.
Yes, it is.
What's that? No, three forty-five.
So F and I, that's the commissioning.
We're not adding now.
And this is their problem.
There ain't going to be no problem today, boys and girls.
Susan, Susan.
You're going to sit on it? It's not going to help the customer.
Do you need a booster seat?
There you go. I feel a little over these as well. Yeah, yeah. You know what's the hardest thing? Reading all these numbers. I mean, it's just nerve wracking.
I want to know how you got the nice colorful tabs. I did the, uh...
Mike, how you doing?
I had no tab.
Well, that's because you rely on the two of us for all-tabbed information.
I got a lot of paper. Boy, do I have a lot of paper.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon. I can't hear you. Good afternoon.
Now, we're doing budget hearings, and we have before us now the leadership for the Parks and Recreation. Good at, welcome, welcome, and let's start with your testimony, please.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And good afternoon, members of council. I'm Mike DeBaradinos, Deputy Mayor and Commissioner for the Department of Parks and Recreation. With me today are Susan Swalson, First Deputy Commissioner for Recreation and Programs, and Mark Folk, First Deputy Commissioner for Parks and Facilities. We are very happy to be collaborating with City Council members around the special capital projects and security cameras at our facilities. This ongoing relationship has allowed us to leverage resources to their highest impact and advance a system which is safe, clean, and ready to use. And we would like to thank, as well, Parks and Recreation Commissioners, or some of them who may be with us today, members of the Conservancy and the Parks Alliance, whom we work with every day and depend on for continued support and leadership. Much, much appreciation should be directed towards our dedicated and committed staff. Our Parks and Recreation staff continues to provide the great work in the form of helping children succeed through high-quality programming and through the high-quality care of the wonderful natural resources and assets, as well as our hundreds of built facilities throughout the city. I appear before you today to present our proposed operating budget for FY15, which includes general fund obligations of fifty-one million, eight-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars, and grants revenue of ten million, four-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-three dollars. The FY15 general budget reflects an increase of five-hundred thousand over the FY14 estimated obligations. The one hundred, the Class 100 request of forty million, seven-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seven dollars sustains the department's authorized level of seven-hundred-and-one general fund full-time positions. Six million, two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars is proposed for Class 200, and two million, five-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-five dollars in Class 3 and 400, and finally, two million, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, five-hundred dollars in Class 500. The mayor's proposed general operating budget in FY15 includes an increase of support for collaborative efforts to expand both the quality and quantity in our program offerings. These programs will help meet the needs of families in their communities by providing the broadest range of programs across age groups and types of activities. This increase will also allow us to build, continue to build collaborations within the community and with city leadership to create new programming that expands possibilities for children and youth. The dedicated women and men serving in the Department of Parks and Recreation represents various backgrounds and diversities. We will continue to foster opportunities for staff throughout the department through recruiting, training, and career development. The Parks and Recreation executive staff is fifty-three percent women, forty-three percent, forty-seven percent men, thirty-three percent African-American, and sixty-seven percent Caucasian. The full-time new hire breakdown for FY14 is thirty-one percent female, sixty-nine percent male, fifty-seven percent minority, forty-seven, forty-three percent Caucasian, and five percent bilingual. The Department of Parks and Recreation is committed to supporting the administration's goal of minority, women, and disabled-owned business participation in city contracting. Based on the available contracting opportunities, the department's FY15 participation goal is established with OEO is twenty-five percent, and we are pleased to report that our current participation is fifty-six percent for the second quarter of FY14. That concludes my testimony, and we're happy to answer questions.
Would anyone else like to offer testimony? No? Okay then. Please, Councilwoman Blackwell?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
I rise today to mention an issue with King Sessing Recreation Center in my district. Many, we have people who are here representing the center, and they are very concerned because when Wilson School closed, this is a result of school closings, the PAL Center left because they were in a school that closed. The closest facility to that, and the largest one in my district, is Lee, is, is certainly King Sessing Rec. So the issue is, people are here today because they do not want to lose the programs that they had. Specifically, a boxing gym that's been there for years, well-known, participates citywide and beyond in boxing tournaments, and they have been told that if PAL comes in, then PAL would supplant the programs they already have with their own. And the community feels that they have the right for programs that have existed for many, many years, that they have a right to have those programs still exist, and if PAL wants to come in, albeit they bring resources and money and staff and all of those things, that they should work within the framework that already exists. That is why they are here today, they're very upset. I've met with both sides, I've had community meetings on both sides. We've even had PAL there, and I think they're represented here, and we'll ask, if the chair would ask them to respond to this matter. And, and we would like, obviously, we like to have peace, you know, we're not elected to not support the community we represent, and certainly, we want any money that we can get, but we're at an impasse. The community is not one PAL if they can't keep their boxing and other programs. And the, and we've met Deputy Mayor DeBaradinos and Commissioner Sue Swalson have tried to work it out and meet with the community as well. So therein is the impasse. So we would like to certainly ask them to comment, and ask the PAL people to come forward and comment. Please, leadership, the department?
Thank you, Councilwoman. We are committed to maintaining programs, the current programs at King Sessing, as well as expand the program offerings in this process. We realize we have a continued conversation with the community. I saw my old friend Tom Henry in, in the hallway, gave me a piece of his mind. We'll, we'll be continuing this discussion, but our view right now, at this current moment, is we will, as Councilwoman said was very important, the maintenance of the existing programmings, programs will continue. We believe we'll do that, as well as expand, in this move, expand the offerings to young people. Susan Swalson, who's been working on this for me and for the department, can add to the detail to that overall view.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to respond.
Yes.
As city officials and a community member, we value the pulse and the concerns and the desires of the community, and we are doing everything possible to honor their wishes. And we have the responsibility on top of that to be prudent about our decisions, and do what's best for all involved. And so I want to just stress, first of all, there's never been a conversation about not continuing boxing, not continuing any program in that facility. What we've been discussing the entire time, because we've had some meetings with the community, we've heard some yeses, we've heard some not sure, we took a tour downstairs with some of the people that are part of the boxing, as well as some of the other programs going on there, and one of the meetings we had, everything was fine once we ended the meeting. And so the Police Athletic League is in three of our facilities currently, Cobs Creek, Harrogate, as well as Fort PAL. And they've been running these programs, and we have a great partnership. The administration has seen much success because of the ability to partner with outside organizations. We partner with a number of other organizations, as well as other city organizations. The Police Athletic League is just one of many, such as the Ed Snyder Youth Hockey Foundation, Philadelphia Anti-Drug, Anti-Violence, Drexel, Department of Human Services, Wells Fargo, and the list goes on. Partnering with the Police Athletic League, a nonprofit arm of the Philadelphia Police Department, has provided additional program throughout the city of Philadelphia. The Police Athletic League is an independent nonprofit that's willing to come in, and when they come in, our goal is to add. Our goal is to add.
Let me, allow me, please, just to state what the protocols are. This is a wonderful body where we all get a chance to have our say, and if you desire to offer testimony, we certainly give that to you. And the interim is also very important that we show respect and courtesy so that everybody can have their say. So we're more than willing to have others step to the table as well, but let's allow the Commissioner to offer her testimony, which is a part of the budget hearing process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Police Athletic League is currently housed in twenty-one facilities throughout the city of Philadelphia. They were housed in twenty-six facilities. As a result of the school closing, we've lost, the city has lost some of those areas where kids were able to go and have their needs met after school. What we're trying to do is offer space as a result of a school closing in that immediate area. PAL is supervised, the program is run by Philadelphia police officers, Monday through Friday. Every program that's offered by the Police Athletic League is free of charge for our young people, whether it's athletic, educational, cultural, computer, there is no charge for anything that the young people have to do if they're a member of the Police Athletic League. Their goal and intent is not to come and take over, it is come, it is to come and partner at that facility and to offer additional programming. Our goal is to make sure we expand the resources for our youth, and that's the whole purpose. There are a group of young people that had somewhere to go, and we're looking to bring those same young people over to King Sessing. I, I want to stress, there's never been an intent to stop boxing or any other program that is currently running. As a matter of fact, we did plan, and we're planning to move the boxing ring downstairs in the basement where it was housed for many, many years. And we're also planning to purchase a new ring, over ten thousand dollars worth of equipment, redo the basement. Our staff has already begun this process, to ensure that everyone that is currently running a program there will continue to run their program. So it is, I apologize if there's ever been the thought that PAL, one, is coming in to take over, two, that we were going to eliminate any programming, because that has never been a part of our conversation. Our, our goal, and our Deputy Mayor mentioned it in his comments, our responsibility, Parks and Recreation, is to add programming for our young people, and that's the whole goal. And I'm not sure who wouldn't want the Police Athletic League in their facility. It is about partnering. They, they don't take over anywhere. It's, it's about us working together to provide a service for our, our young people.
I would like Councilwoman Janie Blackwell to comment, and I will echo often what I hear Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez say. It doesn't have to be either or. It, it sounds like, in my first read of this, that it can be an and. So please, Councilwoman, want to comment and enlighten us further?
Thank you. The community's saying they moved their boxing program and moved their after-school program, and that's what they're upset about. And they are upset that the basement, basement is the basement, so it's not the big beautiful, we have two big beautiful gyms in that facility, that it, that it won't allow them to have the capacity that they had before.
I see. And so, any, anyone else to testify on this issue?
If I, if I can.
Please, Commissioner?
And so, we've been intentionally keeping numbers of the, the people that are participating in the boxing. The basement, although it is a basement, our staff is going down, and they're completely renovating the basement. This isn't the only location, most, I would like to say that other than one facility, all of our boxing programs are in the basement. We have two beautiful gyms there, and there's an opportunity to provide additional programming. You can't do it in, in the gym where the boxing is, because nothing else goes on there. We're not interfering with after-school programming, homework, or anything like that, because that doesn't go on in a gym. We're only relocating the boxing into the basement that we're going to go downstairs. We're not asking for any additional capital fund. We're going to make whatever changes that have to be done down there, and as much as you say it's a basement, that's usually where the boxing clubs are, in our basements. And it's going to be comfortable, convenient, and it's going to be brand-new. The equipment that they have now is going to be replaced at no expense of the boxing group.
Would it be fair to say, Council Lady, that the, it sounds like to me the negotiations continue, the dialogue hasn't been totally resolved as we sit here?
Absolutely. We look forward to having, the people who are here are the leaders in that area, and we look forward to continuing to have dialogue with them and the Commissioner, Deputy Mayor, so that hopefully in the end, everybody can be satisfied. We'd like to have a win-win.
Of course.
And of course, that doesn't exist today, but we're hoping we can work everything out.
That's always the goal. Commissioner, did you want to add to that, Mr. DeBaradinos?
No.
I just, I just wanted to, to, to also comment that Councilwoman Blackwell has, has made it perfectly clear that she is supporting the community, and this is a decision of the department. She has called and, and come over and stressed that if the community is saying no, she's going to back the community. And we've decided, and, and we've decided to move forward because it is an opportunity to offer additional programming for our young people in the community.
And just, just to pose this out, I've talked to them prior to the hearing, we've agreed to meet with, with the leadership of the neighborhood to sort of find the win-win.
That's certainly vital, seeking to find a common ground, because at the end of the day, it's really not about any of us, it's about these kids. Okay? All right then. So, anything else on this matter, Council Lady?
I don't think so, Madam Chair. I've called, I've been calling daily.
Okay.
And on this issue, because these folks have been complaining daily.
Sure.
And, you know, I've learned you got to pass it on. If your people complain, you have to complain. So I know that the Commissioner knows. I talked to the Deputy Mayor when they came up before, and I've been calling the Commissioner daily. And so, you know, it's always my goal, you know, to work things out, and I, I'm hopeful that we can.
Very well.
Thanks.
So we'll place a comment on this issue at this hour, and look to the next Council member that might have questions. Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do want to weigh in, even though I know we're off to, you know, moving off on that subject. But I did have to say that I'm glad to hear, you know, I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Henry in the hallway, and had received several of his emails as well in the past, and am happy to hear that the dialogue continues. As I stated in the hallway, I think that this is something that can be resolved, I think this is something that we all can work out. And I follow my colleague's lead on this matter as a district councilperson, and I know that she always stands with the community. But the one thing I just wanted to say is, the young lady stated that she was in fear that PAL would take over, and I just want to say, nobody takes over in Janie's district. It just doesn't happen. Nobody takes over anything.
Ditto.
In Councilwoman Blackwell's district, so that, you know, I have no fear that if she is involved, that no one will be taking over anything. So I just wanted to state that. So, but good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And let me first start by saying what a pleasure and an honor it is to really be the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission and, a committee, and the good working relationship that I believe that we have following on the... it, that it won't allow them to have the capacity that they had before.
I see. And so, anyone else to testify on this issue?
If I, if I can.
Please, Commissioner?
And so, we've been intentionally keeping numbers of the, the people that are participating in the boxing. The basement, although it is a basement, our staff is going down and they're completely renovating the basement. This isn't the only location. Most, I would like to say that other than one facility, all of our boxing programs are in the basement. We have two beautiful gyms there and there's an opportunity to provide additional programming. You can't do it in, in the gym where the boxing is because nothing else goes on there. We're not interfering with after-school programming, homework, or anything like that, because that doesn't go on in a gym. We're only relocating the boxing into the basement that we're going to go downstairs. We're not asking for any additional capital fund. We're going to make whatever changes that have to be done down there. And as much as you say it's a basement, that's usually where the boxing clubs are, in our basements. And it's going to be comfortable, convenient, and it's going to be brand-new. The equipment that they have now is going to be replaced at no expense of the boxing group.
Would it be fair to say, Council Lady, that the, it sounds like to me the negotiations continue, the dialogue hasn't been totally resolved as we sit here?
Absolutely. We look forward to having the people who are here are the leaders in that area. And we look forward to continuing to have dialogue with them and the Commissioner, Deputy Mayor, so that hopefully in the end, everybody can be satisfied. We'd like to have a win-win.
Of course.
And of course, that doesn't exist today, but we're hoping we can work everything out.
That's always the goal. Commissioner, did you want to add to that, Mr. Deberdinas?
No.
I just, I just wanted to, to also comment that Councilwoman Blackwell has, has made it perfectly clear that she is supporting the community. And this is a decision of the department. She has called and, and come over and stressed that if the community is saying no, she's going to back the community. And we've decided, and, and we've decided to move forward because it is an opportunity to offer additional programming for our young people in the community.
And just to pose this out, I've talked to them prior to the hearing. We've agreed to meet with, with the leadership of the neighborhood to sort of find the win-win.
That's certainly vital, seeking to find a common ground, because at the end of the day, it's really not about any of us, it's about these kids. Okay? All right then. So, anything else on this matter, Council Lady?
I don't think so, Madam Chair. I've called, I've been calling daily.
Okay.
And on this issue, because these folks have been complaining daily.
Sure.
And, you know, I've learned you got to pass it on. If your people complain, you have to complain. So I know that the Commissioner knows. I talked to the Deputy Mayor when they came up before, and I've been calling the Commissioner daily. And so, you know, it's always my goal, you know, to work things out and I'm hopeful that we can.
Very well. So we'll place a comment on this issue at this hour and look to the next Council Member that might have questions. Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do want to weigh in, even though I know we're off to, you know, moving off on that subject. But I did have to say that I'm glad to hear, you know, I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Henry in the hallway and had received several of his emails as well in the past. And I'm happy to hear that the dialogue continues. As I stated in the hallway, I think that this is something that can be resolved. I think this is something that we all can work out. And I follow my colleague's lead on this matter as a district councilperson. And I know that she always stands with the community. But the one thing I just wanted to say is the young lady stated that she was in fear that Powell would take over. And I just want to say, nobody takes over in Janie's district. It just doesn't happen. Nobody takes over anything.
Ditto.
In Councilwoman Blackwell's district. So that, you know, I have no fear that if she is involved, that no one will be taking over anything. So I just wanted to state that. So, but good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And let me first start by saying what a pleasure and an honor it is to really be the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission and, a committee. And the good working relationship that I believe that we have following on the heels of Councilwoman Brown, who was the prior Chair of this committee. And I think that we've gotten a lot accomplished. I think that we have a great working relationship. And we're, we're getting things done, and that's what's most important. So I just wanted to thank you all for your efforts. And also I wanted to let you know that I am very excited about the, the fact that you are requesting an additional half million for the work that you do. I know that it's far, far short of what it is that we'd like to see, $5 million. I see you waving back there. You know, I see you. And so, we get it. We get it. But where we are right now, we know that there's a lot of need in a lot of different areas. And so this is a good start. And of course, if there's an opportunity to receive additional funding, I know that that's something that you're open to and, and interested in, and that we're going to work to make happen for you. So I just wanted to state that as well. Can you talk about the camera project? And we had spoken about this earlier in the budget sessions, and you went into some level of detail, and I was hoping that you could revisit that. And, you know, we did something that I think is just a wonderful accomplishment in getting every district member to commit to providing a camera system and additional security in every recreation center and playground here in the city of Philadelphia over the next three-year period. And so I appreciate that there is a focus on the safety, particularly of our young people, and that our playgrounds and rec centers are places that are off limits. We are sending a message, sending a signal that there are off limits to any sort of violent or negative behavior whatsoever. And so I was hoping that you could, could give us an update as to where we are.
I certainly can. Right now, we have security cameras in 21 of our facilities. And there's hundreds of cameras that, you add them up, 15 to 20 cameras per facility. So there's, gets you up there into the hundreds. We, on, on, over the course of this year, with funds from the City Council District Capital Budgets, ITF funds, we will schedule to install 26 additional, so we'll double more than, than double our sites.
26 cameras or 26 facilities?
Sites, 26, we'll be 26 new sites, so that'll more than double what we currently have. And we have additional cameras to be installed in 24 sites. So that gets us up to about 75 sites, which is better than half of our system. So we're, and we're on a pretty tight time schedule with this, and we've sort of had special relate, arrangement with public property to move these projects as fast as we can. So we, we are thinking that by the end of this one, one-year period calendar year from today, we'll, we will have about 75 facilities with cameras. And then, I think this is a three-year program, as you guys laid it out, and then the subsequent years will complete the work. Susan has some more detail to add to that.
Just want to give you some of the numbers. We actually have 577 cameras in design, which is really great. Public property, our Capitol unit, they're working really fast to get these done. We have 161 already, cameras already installed at 42 of our facilities currently. So the process is moving, is moving quickly, and we'd like to just thank you for coming up with this idea and working with us to ensure that we can provide an extra layer of security for our young people.
Thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing. And another question while we're on security. So last year, we also legislated a requirement that the department report crime stats, so that as district members, we know where we need to put additional resources, if we need additional cameras, or if, you know, like if it's, if it's a hotspot, if there's a lot of activity. Do we have those reports yet? I know that they were scheduled to be, to begin, I think, at the beginning of the fiscal year in 2013.
Well, you know, Councilwoman, I'll be honest, I don't know if we have that data.
Will you have it by June 30th?
We will.
Okay.
Certainly will. But here, it's not to say we've neglected this, the question of safety. We have worked directly with the Police Command to establish strategic police presence in our system around our adult basket, our young adult basketball league, and in our pool swim season, and with ATVs. So that meeting is about to come up. We have an annual meeting, and then we have subsequent, in the, in the early spring, and then we sort of have regular check-ins to see how we're doing. And on all three of those fronts, we have, I think we have made tremendous progress in keeping violent incidences down, keeping, to almost eliminating, I hate to brag about this, but gunplay at our leagues. And we have, although we don't have complete information, the experiential and anecdotal information relative to ATVs destroying our facilities and our trails and our playgrounds, that number has gone way down since Council passed, gave the police the authority to confiscate. And when they gave that ability to confiscate and then recycle, basically get it into recycle and crush it and move it forward, we have, we have gone a long way in, in building a real deterrent to that kind of reckless and dangerous and damaging activities. So we will get you those numbers.
Great.
But again, I didn't want to leave the impression that we're not continuing our work.
No, I didn't, yeah, no, I didn't think that at all. And I think, I guess the one connection that I would like to make, and I know I'm out of time, but the one connection I would like to make is that the idea behind, the idea behind the bill was that as a district member, I would be able to allocate my capital dollars in a way that would be helpful to you. And so, and helpful, you know, to protect our children. So, so I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page for that.
Just to give you some hard data here around the ATV traffic, we have, police have confiscated 282 vehicles that were illegally riding on Park and Recreation property. So that's a, and as Mark pointed out here, just between the early part of June, June 2nd, 13, to October 20th of 13. Sort of the warm weather months when the problem is most acute.
Okay. And I'll come back around for my second round of questions.
That's great news with regards to the, the, the law has provided a deterrent, if you will.
And we thank you for your sponsorship.
You're certainly welcome. It's good to know when we pass some measures that they ultimately are making a small difference. And I do want to commend the Councilwoman Bass as well for the idea of putting cameras in our facilities. It amazes even me that we didn't think of it before, and it's a good thing. So you said that there are 42 facilities. What's the goal long-term? If there are 42 done, what's, what's the balance that need to be done?
Well, we have 150 facilities. What's going to make this doable is the support that we're getting from the council members with the funding and them being willing to say, you know what, we recognize this need. And with you, with you pushing this, we'll have them all done. Just a matter of getting them installed and, you know, the whole process.
Sure. So I'm going to squeeze in my questions in between. In past years, I've raised the issue with regards to vending machines in rec centers. And the, the back text of this is a resolution I introduced my first term, calling for the elimination of sodas in schools. And at the end of the day, the, the former school board decided that was a good thing. Now with obesity being what it is, and most, a crisis in communities of color, has the, the leadership of you considered a similar policy that's been adopted by the school district? And that is considering healthy options and vending machines in our rec centers?
Yes. As a matter of fact, along with the Health Department, we have changed our entire system with our vending machines. We have changed from only having options of whatever the sugar sodas are, we have juice, we have water. So we've gone through the same process that the school district has gone through in all of our facilities.
Oh, so 100% across the board?
Yes.
That's great news. That's great news. And contrary to what the prevailing argument was, companies would lose money on the purchase of sodas, not so. So we thank you for that, because Robert Wood Johnson updates us annually on what's happening with obesity, and it's still, it's still a national issue.
And just, just to comment even further, not only did we make changes with our vending machines, we've made changes with the summer food and our after-school program.
Very good.
Throughout our entire system. So our young people now are receiving healthy meals as opposed to a bag of potato chips. They're getting apple or little, those little bags of apple, apple slices. So it didn't just stop with the vending machines, it's throughout our entire system with our food program.
Fantastic.
And, you know, we have the largest summer food program.
Well, that's something you want to celebrate. Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. So with that, let's now go to Councilman O.
Thank you, Chairwoman. First, let me say, I think you're doing such a great job, and I love all the innovative stuff that you do, and certainly, you know, you'd be greatly commended for all that. I do have a couple of questions. Some of it just kind of like, kind of the overall situation. So in a city of our size, I see you grabbing your ear, let me do this. In a city of our size, with as many diverse communities, city neighborhoods, and changing demographics, people wanting different things in different areas of the city, is there a comprehensive approach to repairing, funding, developing, modifying the various park areas and recreation centers in our city, or recreation areas in our city?
Well, it's a complicated question, only because we have, there's a couple of folk here that we have to pay attention to. One is with our new construction, you're right, we really have to sort of get on the edge of the best practices in the country and around what are the trends that people are looking for about how long do these products last? How do they fit into sustainable Philadelphia? How do they give the greatest value to the current neighborhood population? So I think we do a great job in that, and we, we work with, we have a great planning staff in the, in the department, as well as working with landscape architects and designers from all over the place. In terms of our current facilities, our, our focus, and we're not doing tons of renovations in terms of upgrading, but our focus is to bring them up, and we're still in the process, to a higher quality. So we don't run into, like this winter, I thought we did pretty well, this was a rough winter, but for roofs and heaters, there was an immense demand on our skilled trades. I think we did a good job staying up with that. But the idea is to move the system up to a reliable qual, and a high-quality, day-to-day performance. And I think this program that we're currently working with the district council people to move small capital projects forward is a, is a, we're making ground there with roofs and heaters, HBA systems that we would normally contract out, but we do that in-house now, and that's helping a lot. So, I mean, there's, and then there's, we hope to in this coming year to do a, a high-quality preventive maintenance program as well. So we put those three together, high-quality, innovative design, sort of a consistent investment in our existing infrastructure. And then an ability to keep all our major systems up to grade through a preventive maintenance program is where we are. If, if, look, if our capital budget was, was a, you know, giant, and we had our own taxing authority, like some departments do, or bonding authority, I think we would be, you know, in a different place. But I think given the substantial but limited capital programs, given our, what we, what we have available to us and our fantastic skilled trades unit, our approach is, I think, thoughtful, smart, and in its own way, futuristic.
Thank you. So what you talked about is the lack of, of funding to do all the things that you may feel is appropriate to do, and, and I'm not trying to, you know, we've had this discussion before about various types of things, bonding. And if there was, if there was a best practice in terms of being able to get additional funds to be able to address all the repairs and, and services and maintenance that you would like to do, I mean, is, is that something that's on the table in terms of your internal discussions in the administration?
Well, not in the, in the capital program is really, it's with our bonding authority is, you know, it's, and I think we did pretty well this year. So given what the pie is, I think the department in the capital program has done very well, and the administration was generous with us. And particularly in sort of, again, building back to trying to, you know, make, take care of an old system. Sort of, most of this stuff was built just after war, most of the system was built before 1960.
Yeah.
So, but given the available capital program, I think we've done pretty well, and we're, we're happy about that. And our, our relationship with council and working with the district council folks in moving and blending our capital with the district capital with outside money, I think we've made a pretty good, made, done well with that.
I think you've done a great job with that.
And so that is what it is. And then on the operating side, I think this council did a real, did a, you know, with the broad support of council and the broad community to build out our skilled trades. Look, this year, we have, although we have some hiring challenges, we have more skilled trade men and women than we've, we've had in a long time. We had, we purchased around 30, think of this, 30 new vehicles because of the bump we got in council. And we're better equipped in the, in the, in the material side to do our work. Now, you know, we all have to live within our budgets, and I think we have worked, we've leveraged our operating dollars and our increases to the maximum. So of course, everybody, you know, we all need more money, but I think around advancing the physical plan of our system, we're not, we're not to the level we want to be, but we can, we're moving towards a higher level of safety, cleanliness, and usability.
Okay. I know the bell is running. I'll just make a statement because I will have to leave in 15 minutes. So I'm very concerned about the fact that, I, I think you're doing a great job within the constraints that you have, but trying to expand those limitations as much as possible. Because otherwise, we're in a system where the squeaky wheel gets the oil, or, you know, and it's unfortunate, but I think, you know, the way Philadelphia is built, so many people are so very disadvantaged when their park area, their public space, or their recreation area is not maintained. Some of them have dilapidated, some have been knocked down and never replaced, and the community doesn't show up to complain because they're in depressed areas of the city. And it just doesn't seem that under this system, there will ever be enough money to, to really address that problem on a citywide basis. And, and so whatever your internal discussions are, I think that's like a very interesting and important, you know, policy issue to move forward. The final thing I will say is that I do note that, that in your demographic report of how your department is made up ethnically, racially, gender-based, that it does not indicate Asian-Americans in there. And so looking at the graph, I see that you have one Asian-American out of 626 employees. I'm sure you're going to address that, you know, whenever the time comes. But my, my issue is, is that an accurate number? Because the last department we had, I knew that there were more, but they had one, but there might be three. It just, you know, these numbers I do think are important, and, and, you know, if it's really just one, that's interesting to me, but if there's more, I'd like to get an accurate number.
Okay. We think, and unfortunately, we think that's accurate, but if it's not, you know, we'll, we'll review it again and let you know.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
You're welcome. Are the new vehicles that you purchased, were they green?
Some of them, Mark, this is Mark's world, so I'll ask him to respond.
Yes, Councilwoman, some of the vehicles that we received are hybrid vehicles. Yes.
And so, you say some?
Yeah, the vehicles that are available, so manufacturers are not making, we, many of our vehicles are larger equipment vehicles.
Okay.
Larger, what are called lowboys or dump trucks. Those are not simply available as hy-. Those are not simply available as hybrid vehicles. Fleet has recently given us two rounds, so about 10 of the Ford C-Max, which are hybrid vehicles, and one of them they just gave us is an all-electric vehicle.
Okay, that explains it then.
So, we actually have to find a place to plug it in.
Terrific.
But yes.
Okay. Well, that certainly explains it. Let me get clarity on the question around sodas, and then we're going to go to Councilman Squilla. And let me make sure I heard what I thought I heard, and that is that there are no sodas in vending machines in the rec department, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, in rec centers, and I only know of one, that actually has sodas in the vending machine, is, should one assume that that is an independent vendor that has a machine in a rec building, period?
A number of our facilities have advisory councils, and they are responsible for those, those are their vending machines.
I see.
And so, we are in the process of working with them as a result of the administration doing RFP for the entire city.
Mm-hmm.
For vending machines. That's going to have to change as well.
Okay.
But those are not parks and rec machines.
Okay. Okay. And so, if they're in city buildings, and since we know that we have to lead by example, then the hope is that community advisory boards would philosophically get on board?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, then. Thank you very much. That answers that, that question. Councilman Squilla?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. And again, I want to reiterate what Councilwoman Bass has said about the work that is done around parks and recs, and what it means to not only my district, but the city of Philadelphia, the growth of the city, and really, the interest that we're receiving from the community surrounding these parks and how important it is. You see how engaged people are when something in their parks goes, is not the right way, or, you know, they actually live for their parks, and that people know that that's almost like another holy place to go to. So, it's very important to them, and it's important to us, and we thank you for what you did. During last year's budget, the administration had said they were trying with public property, it did something, they gave them additional dollars for preventive maintenance. And hopefully, that will show the difference in by preventing ma, by do preventative maintenance, you could then hopefully lower the cost of having to upgrade these buildings, redo air conditioning systems, and they fall apart if we could just keep up with them. If, they, they said that they would do that in last year with public property, and this year with parks and recs. Have you received additional preventive maintenance capital this year?
Well, in last year's transfer ordinance, $2.6 million in mid-year was appropriated to the department through the mayor and councilmatic action. That's the money that we've purchased the vehicles, built out our materials, and hired additional skilled trades folks. So, that provided us with the resources to begin the special capital, small capital projects that we're currently working with each council person in their districts. We have 30 projects queued up. Now, these are smaller, these aren't big multimillion-dollar, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, they're generally under 100 grand.
Like fixing a roof?
Yeah, right. You know, a, a single roof, or a small boiler, or a nature thing. So, Mark has all that data. But I think the interesting point is this, we have, we just started that in October, we just got it up and running, the transfer ordinance, then we got positions, materials, vehicles. We're, we're currently in, in the middle of the first 30 projects. We suspect we'll be done with them in, in enough time to, like in May, come back to you guys and get another 30. So, we hope within this current fiscal year to complete 60 small capital projects working with council. You provide the materials, capital through the capital, we provide the skilled trades men and women. We think, you know, we know this is faster, so we, we can do this in six weeks. We can do a project six, nine weeks versus six to nine months otherwise. And we think, although we're not certain, but we think we can save up to 25 to, up, like this is a big range, but Mark might want to correct me, I think it's between 25 and 50%, we can, we can save that money. So, anyway, Mark has the more details.
Yeah, but that's my, that was leading to my question, like, is the city actually probably saving money by having that increase in revenue to parks and recs?
Yes, Councilman, in fact, we're substantially saving the city money. So, just to give you some of the details, as the deputy commissioner said, each of the 10 district council people have allocated three projects. So, we have 30 projects, which thanks to each of you total, you've allocated $563,000 between the, for, between the 30 projects between the 10 of you. Of those, we've completed 10 of the 30 projects, so we're a third of the way through just since November. And also, keep in mind that a lot of these are roofs and boilers and stuff you don't work on during this winter, particularly the winter we had, and plumbing facilities. So, again, things you don't necessarily work on in the winter. We estimate though, Councilman, that, that this half a million dollar or $563,000 investment is probably somewhere between one and a half to $2 million if it would have gone through the, the regular capital process. So, we're probably doing these to, for 25 to 30% of what the cost would be to run it through the capital process by using your, your monies to buy the raw materials and then our skilled trades and equipment to do it.
Well, I think that's tremendous, and that just goes to show you, thank you.
And also, I would add, I would add, Councilman, that it's been great to see our staff under the leadership of Frank Fabi go out and do these projects, they take great pride in their work, and to have them deliver this resource to the communities has been really great to see.
And I agree too, because I know we harass the hell out of your staff, and we get calls from constituents.
You show up at all the parties, Mark.
Yeah, well, if there's food and drink, I'm there.
And every meeting.
But, um...
Uh, but Councilman?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to honor this clock as much as I can.
Okay. All right, I'll come back.
All right, certainly. Please, Councilman Hena?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And pools too, right? You have pools, pool ceremonies?
Yes. That's right, he's our Olympian swimmer this year.
Designated all my nose in junk, right? All right. So, speaking of pools, let me, let me just, let me start off with a question on, on the pools. And is there a, a long-term, because I have a lot of pools in my, in my district, and I didn't know they're quite expensive, and, and I understand it has to be a certain time of year to actually do it, you know, because, I mean, you can't start it now, because it won't get finished for, for, for the season. Has there been a, an assessment of, of the, of the pools, the current conditions of the pools?
Yes, Councilman, we go, our skilled trade staffs go out over the fall and winter, and when the pools are not covered in snow, try and assess their conditions for both interior for the plumbing and the exterior for the painting, and then put together a work order list and start working down through to prepare all the pools for their opening.
Okay, so, so you have a plan?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, good. And we'll, we'll catch up offline on, on the district, and, you know, your staff is great, you know, I want to say that every, you know, from senior staff down to, you know, the people who, you know, I get a call today that, you know, sparks are flying, you know, out of, out of a, out of a light for, for nighttime soccer, and, and they respond. I mean, they respond quickly. So, everybody from the boots on the grounds and, you know, the generals and deploying, and they do an awesome job. And I really like the ingenuity and creativity of some of the, of some of the programs. You know, one of the things that, you know, I, you know, I was just hearing, talking about how, how you, you would blend, right, the blend program? I mean, I know I'm able, you know, we're able to get a lot more done in, in everybody's district by, you know, combining the, the resources that we have, or, or it would sit, or it would just sit in a queue, and there'd be a purchase order, and it won't get to, to whenever. I mean, it won't get to, I mean, unfortunately, we have a backlog on, on our treatments and improvements, right? And, and I think the maintenance and repair will be just as long if we didn't, if we're not able to, to blend some of our, our resources. So, you know, I, I thank you for that. I had a conversation at, you know, thank God we get round two and three here, but the conversation, you know, that, that we were having about spatial designs, right, of, of our, of our recs and, and the playgrounds. And it is with the new, so I, I had some damaged equipment in, in my district. I've had, as, in, in Bridesburg, I have an old, you know, play area that's going to, it's going to receive, I'm investing a lot of money into it, and have some partners, you know, with, with you and today. And the new designs are actually, they're, they're great. And, you know, it, it definitely should be a model when we repair and when we, when we take a look at, at the new design. Now, that costs money, but, you know, it is more, it's, it's such a friendly environment and atmosphere for, for the kids, and for the safety of them, and, and for the monitoring of, of what types of kids. I mean, you separate the toddlers, and, you know, with the play equipment, you have benches around with, with, with some, with, with greenery and, you know, shrub, you know, kind of, you know, aesthetics to it. So, you know, I, I think that, you have the model, you absolutely have the model. And how we repurpose some of the equipment that we have is, is a challenge, you know, but I, I fully, fully support the, the kind of, you know, 2014 approach to, to making it a more open and friendly place for, for kids to play. You know, I, I started a, an initiative called Philly Play, started, launched it last year, and, and like the councilwoman who has, has been a stalwart in, in trying to fight obesity with our children, you know, I have a, a lot of partners here in city council where, you know, we're trying to present, instead of, hey, you have to do 15 jumper jacks and, you know, 10 burpees every single morning to stay healthy, you know, you, you find a way to integrate it in, into a, into a program where it's called play. And, and fitness is, is included, and education and nutrition is all part of play and some hand on, on training. So, I, I am enthusiastically looking forward to partnering, you know, with the parks and recs in, in summer play, you know, this, this year. And, you know, you know, I see in the budget that you said here you have quality and quantity of program offerings. You know, I'm proud to be a part of that. So, if you could, one, tell me a little bit about the programs that you have, and that just the summer, and for the money that's budgeted. And then tell me the possibilities, right? Let's think outside the box, because that's what we're supposed to do here. I mean, we have a box, and we have to maintain a box, but we can think outside and we can expand. Could you elaborate on, with additional resources, what you could do?
That's me. All right. I think, I'll let Susan sort of give the rundown, programmatic rundown, and then I'll, you know, sort of talk about what our hopes are.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to give you some numbers, Councilman, and I, I'd like to just congratulate our staff in our facilities that actually run the programs and work with community members that come in, because again, it's about partnering, those community members that come in and actually run programs along with our staff. But on any given year, this year, I think our numbers were, may have been around the same last year. Our total weekly visits in our facility is 2,441,000, and I think that's tremendous. That's, that's our whole system, but those are the kind of numbers that we get in a year. And weekly, our athletic program, we'll see approximately 47,000 people that engage each week in over 1,100 programs in our facilities. Our staff runs about 59% of those programs, and we have outside organizations that run the other 41%. And so, our goal is to offer to our community members, and so when we're talking about programming, we're not just talking about that six to 18, we're talking about everybody in the city of Philadelphia. So, it's about meeting the needs of the community, not just teens and, and those adolescents, it's everyone in the city of Philadelphia. Of course, you're familiar with our aquatics program, as you jumped in that pool last year.
Yep.
Our pools saw over 800,000 people, visits at 75 pools. And so, when I say 75 pools, five of those are indoor pools, the 70 are outdoor pools. And so, we had more than 2,000 people that were engaged in our aquatics training. So, our goal is to make sure that we are not just opening our pools for young people to come and swim, but it's also so we can teach our young people to swim, because we also need those young people when they hit 15, 16, 17, to be our instructors, to be our pool and PMAs, our pool maintenance assistants, and our lifeguards. And so, it's important to us to have that training. We have specialty camps as well. And our specialty camps during the summer, we have archery, our basketball, baseball, gymnastics, gymnastics actually go all year round, and we have rowing. And one of the things that the deputy mayor started once we merged were outdoor programs, and we have some phenomenal outdoor programs.